Let the allegiance to your flag and United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Grom Hall, Alderman Zen Dudo, Alderman Cathy Bergman,
Here.
Alderman Rose Rosenway.
Here.
Forum is present for the meeting September 17th. I'm sorry, 18th. At 6 o'clock, so we have a forum, so meeting's called to order. Do I have approval of agenda sponsorship?
Make motion to approve the agenda.
Motion made by Alderman Dudo, is there a second?
I'll say.
Motion made by Alderman Rosenway. Um, on favor?
Aye.
Any vote? Is in agenda? You got anything on there?
Make the motion to approve the consensus vote.
Motion made by Alderman Zen Dudo.
A second.
Two second, damn, sorry. Part of here or there?
You're fine, I'll talk about it.
Okay. All right, the second by Alderman Cathy Bergman, on favor?
Aye.
Any vote? All right, minutes for the previous meeting, if you want to look over that. And the treasure floor, like the board bills. And if you see anything, let me know, if not, uh... Again, Saber's motion to approve them. It's open there.
So these ending balances that for August 2025, they're, uh, since we're maybe addressing the new budget, that will go longer into...
So, um, we are going to work on this, and Serene Water is going to help me, um, balance this. But it'll probably be next month. We have to wait until the end of September so we get our, all of our actuals before we can reconcile this.
And, uh, we had a work meeting the other day, and this, uh, and general funds coming in, sewer funding shows that we're a little bit over.
Yeah.
13 to 17 percent, is that going to be where the numbers are? So these are balances that reverse to a lower percentage?
Um... Well, the idea is...
We're out here on some other areas, I mean, along with...
Right, so the idea is to start at zero.
Yeah.
So, um, when we go through this, and so things will have to be moved around and adjusted and bank balances used from. And that's something that wasn't done initially when they approved the 2025 budget. They started at zero, so I can go back and look and see how much we started with on October 1st, 2024, and potentially make this right. I haven't looked at it yet, but that's something that we'll look at and move things around. And also for the sewer, if we can get reimbursed, it would be nice if we can get reimbursed from FEMA, um, before the end of September because there's been, um, a significant amount of grinders purchased. So that, that could, that will potentially help the sewer if we can get the FEMA reimbursement on time.
Would you add to, you know, an holiday bonus in March?
I did have a...
Stayed in March. She said, "Look, it's actually late to prove..." "I don't know."
I don't know that honestly too much. Well, it only goes back to March, so the only thing it was, is that I'm in March.
If you're in March.
Right.
So, anything after that, it's a call that they can...
I'm going to center everything that we, every grinder we've searched since March. Well, I tried to pay close attention, then it was in more... Well, I did it differently this time, and you have to tell me that if it helps or not. On water and sewer, I did profit and loss, but I also did a transaction history. So you could obviously see the bills that we made from eight one to eight thirty-one. So if that's helpful, I'll continue doing that if not. First last one, Tom Dog.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Monkey meat, and it's okay. Can you go too deep, and then all the way down's next year's bread?
I'm going to make a motion to approve the, um, true.
Motion made by Alderman Cathy Bergman, is there a second?
Second.
Second made by Alderman Dudo, on favor?
Aye.
Any votes? All right, public forum, uh, Keith Robinson from Bomb Rain Network, I'm waiting on him to get back to me. And we have Mike here, Mr. Rosenway.
Mike, my son.
Okay, all right, Mike, you, you got the floor, it's all yours.
Hi, everyone. Some of you might remember me working here years back. My president, Flory, uh, two reasons I want to, I want to see about coming back, is a way to come back. I'm rarely home. Four or five years is just too long to be away from home. And, uh, they downsized, and of course, there was other people there before me, so it was kind of both-sided there, you know? I wanted to leave, but, you know, didn't want to leave, but they had me at a decision point. And, um, I believe everybody here knows my work forms when I did work here. Uh, I think I worked for 20-some years here, 20, 20-6, but hang on a second. If there's any way I can come back, I appreciate it, I think I'd be an asset to the town.
Thank you. Congress board, uh, questions, would you add any?
What I would do is do per policy, fill out an application.
We have a... Yes, that would be a personnel thing.
Right, well, yeah, that would have to, I mean, he can, you can fill out an application, and then we would have to have a closed session to discuss it, and then after they make a decision. Then the public will get enough.
Was asked, I don't know, so...
We'll get this application, and then we'll talk to them later on.
Yep, we'll have application, and then we'll have closed session over there, okay? So, can't hear you. I said, I was talking to someone, I said, "Application and closed session over," um, personnel. All right. Unfinished business, uh, Jesse, you want to go, let's kind of go out there.
So, the first thing there, we, you remember, I had asked HJB County if they would, um, take over collecting our personal property and real estate taxes, and they got back to me, and, uh, you have the email there that says that they elected to, 1-9-1-9. Um, they elected to speak to their attorney, and they were given advice, um, not to pursue this venture with us. So that's where we are. Um, I did, I spoke to Adam about it, and Adam asked me to email them again and ask if there were specific reasons. And I did do that, it's out there, I believe, and I have not received a response.
And did they, uh, there's one person who, I believe resides in town, who had businesses in two counties, including the city, and had the same taxes. Have they been sitting in early, if they have a drawdown anyway, or you don't know?
I don't know the answer to that question. Um, we've been working on another individual because she didn't not pay her taxes, however, she didn't get billed for real estate and personal property. So we're working on that. It's really up to the resident to get that straightened out. But I can email them and say, "Hey, where are you at on this?" because we don't know how long it's been. But I can, I can.
Yeah, and then I think the county has the ability to, uh, go lean on the, you know, on anyone, instead of making taxes and stuff, so we get asked to move forward with that because, uh, they have usually, they have continued motions and solvency.
Okay.
Was it, yeah, and how do we, like ours, that's one. We got, we got a license for that from, from previous year, you know, but, yeah. Yeah, but they have to go through, you know, Garchman, or IWO, or something like that, so... I, I just think that's kind of not here, that a machine prints out a piece of paper, and, you know, we couldn't work ourselves in the county. You know, it would save both parties money really in time. And then the people are skipping out on their personal property tax, they're down, that's income the city's losing. They don't care because they're getting their money, because they can't license their vehicles once their county taxes paid or received. So why are we different whenever we're paying taxpayers as well? They should never one of us in here are. So, I mean, I think that's just kind of a robotic response, you know, for to me, I mean, you've heard that before. Yeah.
Who's the, who's in charge of that, is it like the county commissioner, or...
They, see, we'll bring it up to the county commissioners, which are run by Mark Bishop, which, that's why I asked her to find out, I would like to articulate their legal reasoning behind it because I see no legality from their state statute, and ours, and most saying the county can, at their discretion, do that. But just saying no, and that's just...
Well, as a commissioner, then, on Monday, I have points, we have to come over there and, uh, put it from person, see what's responsible, you know, and...
And if it comes out, I guess I can do a sunshine request, if they had to run it through, just, I mean, it might take time, but we really need to know what was said, I mean, no, not one party here was invited or just into the discussion. I understand it's legally closed it, but just hearing us, or talking to us, and saying, "Hey, how could we hash this out there, work together?" That's, that's my main thing, because we have a mutual agreement, we have all these agreements with them, and then they don't bother, care to take our money, you know, that is supposed to not be... So, yeah, that's my thoughts, I mean...
All right, I'll go on with you.
You want me to go with there?
That's true.
Probably kick that out, but to close, that's what we're getting, so... I don't know, but we'll figure it out, I mean, it was just a thought because there are people that skip out on us, and we're losing a lot of income. So, and I hate to say it that way, but, I mean, it's, we're no different. So, um, other than that, if you got anything else, okay. FEMA applications, um, like, every week I have a point of contact, FEMA Department, on wind security comes here and meets with me. Usually on Wednesdays, about one, depending on where they're at, but... So, right now, I think we got what, one left out of nine projects?
I'm not sure, there's so, there's so much on the FEMA website.
There's the new portal, and so you submit everything, your bids and all this other stuff, and like picture report, you have a site visit, then you have another site visit, and then they come in to finalize, which I signed off on the part. I signed off on, um, the CINCO that they are, this, the thing is, it's a reimbursement thing, program where we give them like an estimate, and I'm still working with them on that. There is available funding to give us, to help us give us a boost, but it's just getting that point. And they're supposed to be bringing in that paperwork next week, so... But nevertheless, the CINCO has to get fixed, whether we like it or not, because we, it, it's under urgent, it's like a plan, it's $320,000 just to get back to where it was and foil all that damage.
We got our block now for 60 years. Is it marked off now for 60 years?
I got some jokers, I can put that in, and that counts towards that, each day they're up, they have a, they're going to bring me a whole sheet of how they pay out. Like each cone, is this worth this much, or is this roadblock? And if it's like a school bus drives through there, or anything, if it creates anything change, as long as it adds up over $4,000, and then we're okay, because, I mean, it's going to be way over that, I know that for sure.
Well, you send the guys to my place, and I'll have some comments. Okay, and we're up now. We don't have it, we don't have any, or we got, no, no, we have the comments?
We have, we have some cameras, but we don't have a whole lot. Well, we did have, we did have a bunch of you, but there was blood happening, it worked away, or people just up to there.
Yeah, but, all right, I borrowed some from jokers, so they can, uh, they're down the plan, they're marked with their names and everything, I just hope they had a spike where I can, you know, secure them, because I don't want, you know, I mean, well, it'd be hard, uh, you know, to, yeah. So, and then, other than that, um, the point of contact will be back next week, blood mitigation, the plan we're finalizing on, uh, as soon as I get that. Did we, did I send you the invoice for the generator?
I don't think so.
Okay, there's, there's the whole bill, I'll get to you.
Okay, tell me how much it is, I might know.
Okay, so the generator was part of that spill practice, because it got water in the conduit. The generator's been down since, what was it, April?
Something like that.
March, April, and all that happened, generator for that...
The emergency generators were here, they were pretty terrible.
And also, doesn't that do the water power too, on the man?
It's just, uh, uh, the communication to down there on the panel, but we're supposed to have a backup battery out there. The water tower was not ever outbought, they didn't set too much.
Is it fried, or just a wiring to supply it?
So, that's kind of the video, if we can see the video down there, that communication with the tower, that all companies are around to tell them to give us name or whatever, by the beginning down there. That's what shows us our meaning down there. But that up there is on its own power, at the water tower, but we had a backup battery in it, which it would last for three to four hours, or whatever, or backup, well, when that went out, it blew up, or whatever, and they never got it done. So it's just fluctuating at the power, so if the tower's in operation, filling, and power could out, how to be closing it, and we don't get no water unless I do a bypass manually on it, and then we ain't going to be able to see what we're, you know, uh, high flies on the tower without it, so... Except for pressure gauge, I mean, we can go by pressure.
And if I won't call us if something happens?
You know, it won't call, well, it won't call us either unless it's communicating with that tower there.
Yeah, so that's kind of, that's going to be a call, like E-Dog, you're on the list, if it misses us, we can put it around, we won't get a call if the tower's a little low, or too low. If it gets too low, we gotta shut it right now.
We didn't have a lot of PSI, we gotta go on to make the pool of water, I mean, it's a major problem.
When the call comes in, who's in front?
This...
So, the call, what, the calls, first call, so it calls me, and then it calls Eric, and then it calls you, or calls Adam, and then you, I gotta set up for you. Anyway, so that way, and, and if it called me first, or whatever, and I'm in town, but if not, I'm not in town, I can holler, I want, you know, you for your, like, you know...
But does it come through, like, as a local number, or...
It come through as a sewer plant number, so I don't know exactly what our sewer plant number now is, since we got T-Mobile, but it's, it's the sewer plant number that it's based on.
Since we got them, they'll say St. Mary's wa, wastewater plan on the caller ID. And then there's an acknowledgement code and everything, so, and it, it...
Press four, press four five is what you can tell.
Yeah, press four five, so... But, so they did announce this, we don't have, so they have to have a special scan tool that plugs in, like I was often talking about, we don't have any of that. The people that bought it, when their project was done 2013, or 14, and they put in CK Power, they brought down, put the scanner on, so there's, um, Eric Woodall was bad, I mean, we had a fuel pump bad on it, the electrical board on it, the charging system was fried on it, and so it wasn't communicating when there was a power outage, it wasn't doing its exercising, the lows, and nothing. So, I mean, if repairs on it were about three grand, so we're going to submit that to FEMA, but we have to have that, I mean, if we don't, what do we do? I mean, we have no other, something that big as a monster, you know? So now, it's all done, it's all programmed, it's been updated firmware, it's never been updated since installed. Everything's gone through, and it's ready to roll, I mean, no more problems, just sealed everything up. So, water just got up in there, and, you know, how water gets in there, so... But that will be submitted, and I think I may attach that, because that was part of FEMA's inspection, they seen that and tested it in the field, they didn't even get the start, so that's automatic being right there because you have to have, you know, a backup. So it busts a alarm too, wasn't even working, like, if there was an issue, but it, it just run for 15 minutes and shut down, it wouldn't tell you nothing. So, so, yeah. Um, other than that, pretty much done with the roads, um, the culverts is the last thing, which we're planning on skoping, and taking the GPS coordinates of all the culverts around here, and their flaps, and that provided to FEMA with the pictures and GPS coordinates, and then they're going to estimate from when we measure the diameter of pipe, what it should be, um, you know, which way they should go with replacement, and give us an estimate how much they should pay us. You know, there's sometimes it's a 75-25 match, or 80-20, but either way, that's better than nothing at this point, so... Other than that, that's where I'm at on that, um, Delta Regional on that, I didn't do that.
So, Delta Regional, that, that grant has been, um, submitted and accepted twice, so we're just waiting, that's where we're at on that. SEMO RPC did most of it for us, Adam and I had to do a little bit of extra stuff, and they even requested more things than SEMO RPC. And they even requested more things than SEMO RPC did that too, so, um, we're currently just waiting.
And that was, I think we did a request for, um, down there. We did a request on that day after they came in and had a, like a phone conference with everybody at DNR that deals with us. So, because of the, the flood zone over there and the completion time, if we got approved, they could put a temporary system in while they're building a new one. And for about six months and then they'll get, they can get over to a plant, you know, in the area.
For those water?
Yes, like Perryls. So, it better be about thirty-five thousand a day, like dude style, like the one Perryls got. But, um, it's just, there's a huge power logistics, I mean, permitting and everything else, but i- if we got approved in October, it'd be four to six months before we get groundbreaking. So.
So that's inside.
That is inside, yes, and, uh, we requested five hundred thousand dollars. And I heard we were one of very, I think maybe two applicants that actually applied for that, for that money. So there's not many people that there was a hundred, one, a hundred and twelve million available. So, yeah, a hundred and twelve million available. So, they're worried about catastrophic failure, DNR is, and then how leak our system is at a leaking point. So, and this will also be like for the grinders too. But the priority is the plant first and then the grinder, so.
Will it have a reduction in number of grinders, like seventy-five percent of the grinders in the, like, in the gravity?
Uh, I didn't, it's gonna be more than that. It just been, I know we have Microsoft, we, uh, had a Microsoft, they're talking about. So on the railroad track side, we're on the north end of town here, that's definitely gonna be grinders. And then back cemetery room, there's either gonna be individual grinders or we're gonna install a lift station. Uh, just, just for the gravity flow to go to one of the stations and come over, that's what we're talking about. Um, and then we have, uh, like where Mr. Helm's and all them live up there on the hill, that, uh, we hit the part of the rate. You know, a four percent rate on the gravity flow system, it's gonna, we probably have to go grinder system there, it could be so deep. Uh, getting that four percent rate from their residents all the way back to the city street. So, we're talking about that. Um, down by the Wayford plant, a couple of them down there, they probably have to be where actually put a lift station in. Cause there's gonna be, there's gonna be actually, uh, big, there's gonna be big lift stations, but it, uh, we're talking, uh, with our more constant probe. Uh, that's actually gonna pump, so the town, the gravity feed to a certain point and then a pump over the hill to get to maybe twenty. So that's what it's gonna be.
Who's higher, Mary Cliff or Humps?
Um, geologically from aerial, and down, Helm's is higher.
So it could start to flow to Mary Cliff?
Well, and that's what we was talking about too, is the geographics of the ground, we're gonna be so deep, they don't.
Oh.
So, you know, we're trying to keep away from, you know, fifteen foot, seventeen foot, main, if we can keep from, that's what we're trying to, it's kind of trying to coordinate. But we get that, we have to work on, and that takes a lot of shore in there.
Yeah.
Um, our contracts got to be on, which after the fact, this is all put in, we're not gonna lose shit, having problems for at least ten years. I mean, we're, we can save the money, have to buy a back there, jet or truck, whatever. So when we do have to start getting money instead of cleaning thirteen over two. But the gra- the, the grinding system is, you know, low on air, that's what it's gonna be. Cause like, uh, the subdivision up there, that's all on gravity flow, except for one of his lift stations, a pump that's through the sewer plant. That there will discontinue, then that lift station, you know, they're only gonna be one down in the backside or whatever, uh, on the backside of the hill. And it'd probably be a smaller lift station, it don't have to be a huge one. Uh, and that pump to the gravity, gravity flow from the lift, or from the subdivision can actually go to across the highway, there's enough fall there to get to the plant very well. So, it's, uh, just geographics, you know, the ground, so, you know, the alcoves and stuff, so.
Cool, we'd be able to sell a repurposed old lift station, the equipment from that?
That there with, uh, the system, the way it's old, um, like the Meyer pumps, lots and stuff like that, we probably actually refurbished, or been get refurbished and sold to a smaller town than us that handles them. Uh, we talked about E ones, we would have to, you know, pin on that whole thing, the cost, you know, uh, we have to knock the cost off, or, but, you know, uh, we're kind of all talking about that, um, and then it's, uh, too, there, uh, you know, uh, if we can actually re-retail for a smaller amount, but still get something back, I'll do it in a little bit, so. I mean, anything that we put in brand new, if, if like, so if we stay with the E ones for the grinders, it's gonna stay, which we probably go ahead and actually put in, like Microsoft, we would actually put in new grinder pits, new plumbing. Uh, that way we don't have headaches down the road again, uh, the random system, we're into that. So, if we stay with the E ones, whatever E one we have, where we're gonna put, be able to put gravity flow, they would be able to go to that area and then we save money on, you know, residential grinders, so that, that'd be a plus for us.
Um, yeah, and just to touch on that, and I was talking to Mike, he has a reserve order, they also can help you sell those things. Say them up, they put them on their website, but there's many towns that use E ones. The Myers, we may be able to, like Kansas City, buy them for refurbishing. But, um, you know, the E ones, Cape Girardeau used them, that was a beta project, uh, you know, in federal areas, so that, and also Buckingham Palace has over a hundred and thirty of them, and they use them. And it's crazy, I, I never knew that, I was just researching and watching, reading their whole story, a hundred and thirty of them, it's crazy. But, um, but yeah, it's, uh, they, they hold their longevity, their, and the way that I understand it, you know, replacement cost on them, buying them half the cost, if we have them good, if we make just half off, I'd be happy, I mean. I mean, if we're not gonna like the lift station, we can do that one, but just like I was saying, if you get that money, there's, there's so many gun, I, when we did this, I did FEMA, I did Delta Regional, I did everybody could. But, you know, like, or we can slink as our plant, that is what's eating up our budget and everything, so, I mean, if we can get that money, yeah, FEMA will take away what they award us. But, I always shoot high and hope for the best, I mean, fifty thousand, the highest is five hundred thousand, so, I mean, why not? I mean, but it doesn't hurt. Insurance, insurance is not one to pay nothing and they, they wanna take our pumps apart. And I talked to the adjuster, the April adjust, and, and I, I mean, I'm not happy because it's been since April we did this plane. I told them that it is not feasible on the lab to be a controlled lab to just replace half a roof. And then they wanna take our pump to their facility and dismantle it, which will void any warranty of Myers, I told CJ Rankin. If they take it apart unless they're Myers certified, they will not rebuild or touch that thing, so you just pay scrap metal. So, and I questioned him on that, well, I said, you don't need to, you can take an ohms meter and you knows what I do, see it at the resistance pad, it's welded itself to itself, I said, we already bought one, we had to. But we're looking so far at fifty-five thousand dollars after the, the death of all.
This is FEMA?
No, this is our insurance company.
Where are they based?
Um.
Where are they based?
Jess City, I think, the Smoker and then Custom Insurance, and so.
And Myers is in Kansas City, right?
Yes, but they wanted to take it to the forensic engineer, they wanted to pretty much decimate, take it apart piece by piece.
Yeah, let's just send it to Kansas City to do a check.
Well, I, and that's the thing, they already know what's wrong with it, because they know their systems, I mean, we gave them on the phone, I mean, Rankin's facts of everything, but, and they knew, because they're served by tax. And it was done, I mean, from melted to the whining for long, so. So, so far, I mean, yes, we have about fifty-five thousand dollars in insurance money coming, that's this far. The other stuff isn't complete yet, because I told them, it's pretty much, they need to get off the pot on this, because we've been waiting six months. And I said, told them, I don't know how your feelings are, but I don't think replacing one little triangle on a four pitch roof is acceptable. When it's all missing shingles. So, I told them that I just don't think it's accept- acceptable to, so he's gonna revisit that.
Didn't you say triangle, you're talking about the trusses?
You know how, uh, you know how our pitches are, we got one here, one here, one here, one here, they wanna do one and leave the three that are missing shingles and the sheathing and everything.
They don't wanna replace the shingles and get over there.
No, they wanna do one, and I said, that is unacceptable. Because DNR standard, that lab and what the equipment we got in there is worth more than what the shingles would cost. So, he's gonna revisit that, so he's been a fight with that, I mean, I've been fighting this for months, it just looks like. But yeah, so we're on that, um, do you have anything on your end, old man? All right. Have you guys got any questions on any of that stuff?
If the thing's fried, can they rebuild it? Myers, Myers can rebuild it.
Yeah, so, but if somebody else tamper with it and guts it, like in fish, it just brings it back in parts. Myers won't touch it. So, yeah. Uh, okay. Anything else, guys, the guys that don't? New business, um, subdivision A, those required department account, they dispersed the funds. That's on, Jess, you wanna reiterate on that too?
Uh, so we, we currently have, can I say how much?
I, if you want to see that.
Uh, we currently have five thousand seven hundred and thirty-one dollars and seventy-eight cents in the fire department fund. Um, a decision needs to be made on what, what you want done with those funds. So we can close the account.
What was the original intent, uh, on those funds, was it for equipment or, uh, firehouse or?
I think it was, uh, operational costs.
Uh, I think there's a fire tag.
That's fire tags, that's how I was paying their electric bill, um, propane, internet.
So operational costs?
Operational costs.
Right, so that's the fire tags. So, did we bring in enough tags to fund them or did we use tax money to?
No, they, 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 they were self-sufficient going in.
And currently, with the revision of the structure of the fire departments, this, uh, the county takes over the bills and stuff connected with, with the firehouse.
Yeah, I mean, whenever you, you gotta sign the base, the, the basically, they're, they're, they're. I don't know, I, I don't know what the literature said and water and all that, and all that, um, that would be, that's some of the mistakes there.
They are.
On that, but, I mean, technically the, it is fire tag over the money, I mean, you know, but, I mean, they're having to mark this.
I don't know, that's what I'm trying to figure, you know, it's like, how many did you tax?
Oh, many, I can imagine here.
Like a hundred, fifty or?
Well, I mean, we, depleted, depleted over the years, but I'm thinking.
I don't know if you're number, the previous where it can keep, uh, an aggregate count up.
We like the counting.
I don't think it. Hundred fifty, so that's a hundred fifty ohms.
Maybe, right?
All right.
Yes. That's just a high number.
I'll have to pull it up and see.
But I, uh, I believe they have their own checking account personally too, from their bar reviews and other things, so I don't even know what's in there. Because that's not part of ours, that's part of theirs, so, I don't know how much was in there. Cause like, when they donate, donate money to Levi, it's, no, nothing to the city, it was their own checking account, so I don't have money in there too.
Well, the short term, I could close out the account in municipal protocol, put that into, to, I mean, uh, so that's their, uh, two, uh, people's processes.
Okay.
From the user's initiative.
I did, did their journey.
They can prove the CD or something.
We have a, an operating reserve account that, um, is not USDA or anything like this, kind of like the savings, but we all, we're gonna use that in.
I would create a separate one, one CD just for this, so that's just the part. And, uh, I didn't go, uh, tell me anything for six or whatever, and then, uh, and then we go.
Or you wanna do the separate one and then go within that big one, like I did the other one?
I would make that an individual, even if it's a small amount, you probably only, you can open a CD of a thousand or five thousand dollars there. So, uh, and I would be there with the municipal one too. Well, we just look for, that's.
And that's, right, there's just an account she found money in.
How much is that?
Nine hundred and eighty dollars.
That's what I'm saying, when they closed the court here, when they had court, they never, they just left money in their account, never got it.
Much as they reserve me, I don't know, you said like homes or something for the streets?
Or did you put it in something, I don't know.
Or use it for repair or to donate?
I can just move it to that operating reserve and when you, you purchase something, it'll be sitting there.
Right.
Not get wasted with that money.
What about, um, like, I don't know, figure out, I guess, what do they, what do they use that for anyway?
Well, I mean, like Doc said, if you're gonna have to purchase cones or if you need to buy the rebar to take the cones or, you know, we.
This is municipal, it's probably, um, uh, lawn lawn stuff, you know, grass vines or.
That would be.
Parting from speeding tickets, so you could use it for the streets and go back kind of, you know, to the area of.
Well, and I can put it in our street county tax account too, if you really like it.
Oh, 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 yeah, that's an interest bearing account.
Yeah.
That was an interest bearing account on that nine hundred dollars, so that mean ain't much, but it's. I can't wait, they missed that, remember they had court? They left nine hundred dollars in town clothing somewhere, stays. So.
And the people who paid for the tags, are they in town or out of?
Uh, that's out, that's out of town.
Out of town?
Yeah, uh, no residents, I'd say when it's paid for, fire tag, they just have to be.
And when I talked to Sarah, my Sarah, their, their lawyer, district's lawyer, that she was looking into it, because it's operational funds versus, you know, everything else, because we're kinda unique, we're the only fire department jurisdiction that the city would help fund or whatever versus the other ones, so it's kind of a unique situation, so that's why. that's why.
Yeah, I mean, there, I mean, I can see different types of handling stuff, but, you know, for now.
Part, yeah, part.
Uh, and then, if I were out in a county and I was paying money for fire tags and all of a sudden, that all went away and I paid it, then if you have a hundred and fifty people, five thousand seven hundred dollars is gonna be a thirty dollar refund for a person, per family. And I think that would be nice to do, because, uh, I think we need to do that, uh, you know, we have water, sewer rates going up and stuff like that and then, uh, they're all hit, 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 you know, your pocketbook and I think it would be a good PR thing for the city to do, uh, to, uh, to flow something back, you know, to the, the, the.
A lot of them probably don't get, through a lot of these, use our utilities. People that figure tax and tags.
Yeah, like that.
Do they use their water or server? Are they ready?
Well, I mean, a few of them do, like, uh, four beds out there and day pollen.
Day, and all that, okay.
Uh, they, 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 uh, they still, they like fire tag.
Oh, yeah.
They still have our water, they don't actually, they have water, but.
Yeah, but I agree with Doc on that one, I mean.
So, that's, I mean, that's just one, uh, play, you know, on there, uh, discuss that later, but for, it is real in the market, in the cities.
So, MRV, number seven, up at the highway along the fire.
We have to call, we have to fire, I think MRV is higher than the first.
Yeah, it's, we'll, they're gonna have to like, pull this by, makes sense.
Doesn't have to be with MRV, it could be, uh, Amex or, you know, whoever pays, I mean, all you gotta do is Google CD interest rates.
Yeah.
And find the highest premium one and, you know, put it there, be in the city's name and, and, there you go.
So, maybe that's taken care of. Anybody else have any questions or comments? Alright, uh, bill number ten sixteen, an ordinance adopting an annual budget for the fiscal year beginning on October first, twenty twenty-five, and appropriating funds pursuant So, I had two days, we had that work session.
Yeah, so, uh, we had a work session the other day, part of balancing our budget and, uh, we've got things hashed out, uh, well with that, so that's the background to this bill and, uh, I make the motion that we were legally obligated to, uh, have a balanced budget, which we've managed to achieve and, uh, uh, I would make a motion that we, uh, both approve on, approve this bill.
Okay, so, we have a sponsorship and a motion for, uh, and do we have a second?
A second.
Okay, so, on this, we're gonna read it, do two readings, so after that, we're gonna vote to accept this and we're gonna do the reading and the roll call, like, and.
Yeah, do you wanna just read it real quick?
That's fine, if you want to, I guess.
Okay, bill number ten sixteen, ordinance, number ten sixteen, an ordinance adopting an annual budget for the fiscal year beginning on October first, twenty twenty-five, appropriating funds pursuant thereto, whereas the city clerk has presented the board of all men an annual budget for the fiscal year beginning October one, twenty twenty-five, and now therefore be ordained by the board of all men of the city of St. Mary in the series as follows. Section one, the annual budget for the city of St. Mary for fiscal year beginning on October one, twenty twenty-five, copied which is attached thereto, and made a part of as if fully set forth herein, having been heretofore submitted by the city clerk is hereby adopted. Section two, funds are hereby appropriated for the objects and purposes of expenditures set forth in said budget. Section three, the ordinance shall be in full force in effect from and after its passage and approval by the board of all men passed and approved this eighteenth day of September, twenty twenty-five, here in Beckett, City Clerk Tessa, uh, Hunter, all the men, Rose, Rose and Spike, Kathy, Bertman, Zandia.
So, we have a second, uh, motion.
Promotion.
So, all favor for voting and for, you know, acceptance of this ordinance to vote on and pass for a second reading, uh, all favor. Hi, everybody's high on that, any votes? No votes, alright, so, we're gonna have a second reading and this one will be a vote by individual roll call, so, for adoption, so do we have a motion on the floor to adopt?
Make a motion to adopt by ordinance number ten sixteen.
By heading only?
By, by heading only, ordinance adopting annual budget for the fiscal year beginning on October one, twenty twenty-five, appropriating funds pursuant thereto.
Alright, so we have a motion to adopt, do we have a second?
A second.
Motion made, said by Oliver, Rose and Mike. Alright, roll call vote, Oliver, Zandia?
Hi.
Oliver, Kathy, Bertman?
Hi.
Oliver, and Rose, Roseman?
Hi.
Alright, therefore, this day, September, bill number ten sixteen, is hereby adopted for the fiscal year budget. It was good to be at that point compared to last year. I think we had enough work sessions in last year to do that.
Yeah, congratulations.
Was it just the, was very, it was very helpful.
It took a lot of work.
It takes a lot of work and I'm not a spreadsheet girl, I'm a pencil girl, so I have a lot of pieces of paper in the log in my head.
There you go, that says then, right, set on radio, alright. Alright, next is the resolution to accept the RFQ from Heartland Engineering for, for the drinking water improvement project engineering scope. So, we sent out the RFQs to all the indigenous and other ones, um, you know, for different, um, bid processes, pretty much like any project for this. So, Heartland Engineering, it was the only one to submit, um, this packet, so we need to score them. Um, if you went through it already, I can kinda give you a little bit of rundown, Michael couldn't be here tonight, but I can kinda give you a little rundown of there's some options, uh, for the water. That way, uh, because we got to look at the booster station that never got finished, that can be utilized, you know, and, uh, as long as the water table's good and there's a good source by, up there by the C and B hall, we may be able to get a good core sample and actually have a well and be able to fill on our own. There's some other options too, but, uh, Michael would have all that, but pretty much it's seeing if we have an option and I applied for this and got it a hundred percent funded, so the city has no contributing factor on this at all, so it's a hundred percent. Um, Michael's ready to start, and he's actually already done, because he's already got pretty much everything, so he's anticipating that leisurely up there is a water basin table and he can utilize that booster pump station and we'll be able to provide our own water, won't have to be under the thumb, and we can contribute and readjust the rates and come revisit that as that gets done. Um, like I said, he's got different options and proposals, but until we approve and score them out, which we only have one.
We only had one other response too, and that was one of those generic emails, I'm out of the country, I can't help you. So, that's the only other response and I did make a mistake, so these RFQs, they had a little longer, they had two weeks extra to submit, so.
So, nobody could say there wasn't more than enough time, they had way more than most, so Michael's got a pretty good idea when they did the flyover and the LIDAR and the aerials like that, so there is water tables and, you know, spring things, and that's just one opportunity, I mean, there's other ones too. Maybe working with Burr, I know Burr said no, but he's kinda been back and forth with them, so it's to help the whole community and also it, it brings an infrastructure, because a lot of companies looking at utilities, you know, and if it's gonna be a lot, they're not gonna jack with it, so.
Yeah, he's demonstrating how you believe of, of interest, professionalism, commitment, uh, to our project and it's always a, an additional input for us and, and as we, there's a possibility that our water rates can go down with this, we're all hoping for that to happen, so you know we've got an increase.
The only thing we will have to, he said on this one, if we were to do that, because I remember Hayti and other ones, I talked to, they each married on in this book, Hayti speaks highly of them, there was another company that I'm not gonna mention, that been here before too, um, did the same thing, where they went in and now they are producing their own water and they're also bulk selling it to surrounding towns, so, um, which is really nice. And they don't have to chlorinate either because the water's actually good.
Is it Hayti?
And Hayti, yes. So, um, given the circumstances, yeah, I mean, it would be, it's gonna be expensive either way, but we have the, the pressure, I, what would you call that?
Booster station.
So, I mean, it's not even finished, so we could use.
Sure, I think we went to booster stations for, is where we had our own tower, we could make our own water for, where it's actually for, is actually producing more pressure into the system, that way it holds, it maintains pressure for everybody in town. So, if we had a fire or anything like that and maintain at least sixty-five, sixty-five PSI at all times. Now, the other thing to get is do is if we get that booster station back up and running and do this and we can get a well saying and producing forward at six hundred gallons a minute, you know, to produce our own water, we could actually get rid of one tower out of our head in the whole tower period, so we can actually get rid of that. Uh, but the only reason why that tower's in operation is because we gotta have fire protection. So, if we hook to a fire hydrant and start fighting a fire, you guys are running out water off of one tower, because it's only two hundred and thirty thousand gallons here, you know, uh, of water in there, so, and then down there, total block, seven weeks. So, and so, uh, that's, that's the reason why that one stays in operation too. I wish it didn't have to, because we're, we're taking a water loss and everybody don't understand that, uh, because when we're, you know, taking the water from the county to here, it's going into our tower and we're not seeing what's actually going into the tower, we're only seeing what's going through our system. So, uh, and then what we're, whatever meter, all our meters is, you know, given that into, and so, but hopefully that this goes through, it'd be awesome, I would actually like it. Uh, if we get away from the fluorination, that'd be awesome too, uh, I'd really just have plenty of metal water, not, not a big four feet, but, you know, and Shaver is one we gotta have.
Before this system, we had, I mean, we had water, of course, but it was horrible, I mean, in terms of the clothes being brown or yellow.
Yeah, so the old system before, what that was, is because where our wells sit, anyway, a lot of iron in the system. The other thing is we had cast iron mines, that's gonna put a lot of our nation iron out there too, and that's the reason why we had to flush most of the time, and that's the reason why you get your biofilm inside the pipes and that's what causes the bacteria, that's the reason why we had to chlorinate before and everything. And then plus we produce our own water, so we had to, you know, attach some magnate, uh, calcium, uh, fluorine, so that was a big factor. Right now, when we're doing fluorine, the only reason why we're doing fluorine is because too many samples came back bad, which, it was, it was, it was caused in a situation of construction, that's what happened was, and, uh, once, we had to go to fluorine, it's hard to get away from, so, the thing that is, if we go to this system, we go back to our own system and we show good samples coming out of well, it's a very good possibility that we don't have to chlorinate because we got new PVC out here, and PVC, yes, it holds biofilm, but not that here's, you know, uh, bad, so.
So, what about the iron issue?
We will not have no iron if they dig the well deep enough, anyway. Uh, okay, it depends on where they dig a well. Um, a lot of times, so if they dig it up on this hill, a lot of times you have a lot of limestone and that limestone filters it out, so you won't have iron. Now, calcium, yes, you will, uh, but, and, and, but lime actually softens water, so we might not have the calcium as bad as you think. Uh, so, but iron, basically the particulates of iron, it depends on the depth of your woods, so anyway, you know, what, what material we use. If you use some, uh, cast iron material, you know, if that's where you're gonna be trying, you know, to take or sell.
They even did, uh, uh, redid West Plains, over quarter, where they can see West Plains and surrounding down there, so obviously we've got that, but, but anyway, Mike talks, it's, it's not gonna be, it's, it'd be a quicker project, it wouldn't take as long because it's statistically, you know, maybe less than a year of that, depending on the weather and everything else, but, and it'd have, you know, all those contributing factors, but if we can get online, we can still, if we reach a contract with the county, they'll just shut that valve off, we can always use it when we need it and recharge us for everything in the pipe and, you know, whatever. But the thing is, I, Mike's got this pretty cleaned after a T where hopefully it works out, where we have enough more pressure to do with town, cover that tower, booster station, and be able, because, um, the way I'm understanding it, Burr's had problems building that tower right outside of town, like Burr's control mill, so, so I like salted, whatever, so, if we can sell to them both and help pressurize their system on this far end, that would help, you know.
Maybe we'd have to connect.
Yeah.
One of both, both counties.
Yeah, and then they would actually have the pressure they need, the water they need, probably better quality water, but, but, uh, there's a water table up there, I'm happy to think, but.
I don't remember what it was, what we salted, I know if we get a certain footage, we'd have good water, but we wanna go deeper.
Yeah.
Be in the middle of the offer, so that's a little, because like right now, drought, anyway, we don't wanna, you know, have a little table, we wanna stay in the wood.
We don't want to look too shallow, yeah. And we'll be all gone, I mean, that thing probably still be going, I mean, if it's a deep offer.
Well, the offer, so, that's, hopefully we can put it, that's definitely real, that's, that's, I produce a lot of water, so.
Do they reject, I mean, I'm thinking town both, do they think, enough, if we do get a couple more businesses in there?
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's what, that's what the plan is, because when we talk in life, that's the reason why we said, hey, uh, you know, we got the subdivision up here, they grow, do a couple more businesses in there, uh, I mean, hopefully one coming soon, hopefully. Um, I'm really hoping for it, um, but there again, if we get a manufacturing plan or something, you know, like Sabaliner was, that's what I was talking to you about, that's just like a wastewater plan, I said, hey, we need to go a little bigger, I don't wanna go extreme, but I wanna go a little bigger, that way I know it's gonna actually, you know, take care of the population inside the town, so, or if we do build business, and that's what we did, is we extended out another, I think, fifteen. So, if we do build business, and that's what we did, is we extended out another, I think fifty percent of, you know, so. Yeah, so that's, I mean, you ain't got a whole lot to be able to build unless we get a levy or something like Kate Scott and be able to build downtown. And then, you know, like.
It's not too large, it's like, you know, in a conference call on my notebook here, I mean, if he and Art said, no, I mean, don't overkill. Give yourself fifty percent threshold for economic development. Because when you get into this and moist water and that, that tracks, that's another killer in economic development, I mean. And then there'll be rates and studies and people that quality water, things like that. Now, you never enter before, but it's just the fact that the matter of this will go on our own. Then we'll be able to set rates and not be dictated. And paying for water just sitting in a tower right now, that we may or may not use. Will use it, but not right away, you know, it's a sad thing. And then if we have a fire, I think the district got that worked out. But before, they wouldn't even, I even argued with Mary, we didn't think it was fair to make us go to jail over the retail fire trucks. You know, off a little clean out on whenever we keep track of all, volunteer, just let them know. I just don't think that's fair. When other fire departments like Saint John, you know, waters. And then fill the trucks up and go back, they don't pay us. It's, it's mutual aid, I understand, but we're on the hook for that bill, you know, so. But I don't know what you guys want to score on this. Everybody's got to do this, and it's got to be turned in. Um, it's up to you. I mean, we can make a motion to adopt or hold off, but.
Yes, no, it's for the formality of scoring. So I move that, we do that, submit it, and then at the next meeting or whatever, approve it. And I'm okay with approving it right now, but.
That's all the way along with us, uh, in this order.
Well, if you guys want to fill it out.
No, it's kind of like when we did last one, we just pretended I had a work section filled it out. But we didn't find a score sheet on the computer, because that computer's having problems because. So.
Thank you, Sam.
Yep.
Make sure to call me in.
Well, here's one through five, and then it's just rated. Give a, a one through ten rating for these, and then do the man, and so.
Because there's, why don't you, you two, some, you guys, um, had something, Jody and I have been working on, kind of, uh, well, and that's for another meeting, but our numbers are, just do ten seventeen. Just do ten seventeen. Sweetie, it's the reason I doesn't speak. What do you do as an handyman? I do, because vanilla ones, I do put out there, yes, but I just build it, thank you.
All right, so how did you run our scoring on the one?
Okay.
Did you did?
We did it, eight seventy-five, eight seventy-five, one thousand.
That's good, that's, that's.
But you're going to have to start there.
That's, that's good enough for my balance, I'd say.
Okay, we passed, I think we passed, so, we passed.
I passed. All right, so, um, is there a motion on the floor for anybody to accept the resolution of ten seventeen?
The resolution number will be ten seventeen, it doesn't say that on the agenda.
So I make a motion to, uh, adopt resolution ten seventeen to accept the RFQ from Heartland Engineering for the drinking water improvement project engineering.
All right, is there a second?
I'll say it.
There must be a second, they all can move. And also, that's where I do real call. Ultimate, that's you know.
Aye, here. Seven one.
Roll call them.
Roll call, bros.
Aye.
Aye. I'll bring my caddy very quick.
Aye.
I'll bring the river.
Aye.
All right, so, resolution ten seventeen, accepting Heartland Engineering for engineering study for better drinking water improvement project of the city is now adopted.
Yay.
Yay.
So now that we've done that, what's the, how soon's the next step?
I call Michael and say, hey, you got chosen, had all the applicants who were the best.
Yes.
And then, and then he steps in there and starts doing his thing. He gets, we'll probably give me Frankie and we'll start doing that.
I had to go play with the DGP, I should have hit.
Yep.
And it was hard.
So then we'll be hammering and getting on the ball on this one.
Great.
We're kind of tackling two things at one time. I know it sounds crazy, but if we don't, it's just, you know, bandages you have, but we gotta do something to benefit us, not everybody else. So, all right, um, subsection E, any additional issues that may come before the board? Does anybody have a name? Um, anybody, you guys? Um, Mary Cliff, I'm still dealing with that. I just like your request. And I'm waiting on an answer. Um, me and Frankie were talking earlier with me, I may not have an idea, but.
Well, we got an idea, and I'm just waiting on it here, that's from people. Um, the thing about it is, uh, with the vendors, uh, the other company that builds the pumps and then, uh, Dan, the one that sells speed one, we're gonna like all run around with it, it's got all time to figure out how to do this. Uh, you get, you get back in a normal situation with that, um, but, uh, we have some plans in place. And I'm trying to see if it's going to work. If it does work, then we can actually do it in-house. And it won't cost us very much, as in the three of us working on it, we did it. Um, the basically, you're going to have to enter, did, you got to did, you know, uh, and re-mount stuff and everything. Which I kind of feel that we got, um, uh, took in for a ride on this situation, in my opinion. But, uh, I, I mean, my hands are hot, I, I, I don't have the authority to do things on that part. But I think it should go to Frederick, but.
I mean.
So for the meeting purposes, we had a work session last Tuesday. And, uh, in which we addressed some issues with the grinder pump, uh, near Mary Cliff. So Mary Cliff doesn't really have anything to do with this, uh, other than the location. And, uh, what's happened is it became apparent that there were some methods used in installing equipment that were sketchy, uh, and upon investigation, uh, our suspicions were confirmed regarding the, the core method that something was installed. And the company that installed it has not been forthright in wanting to, uh, make amends for this stuff. So now we're having to jump through and find alternate solutions. Hopefully, that company will take responsibility for the things that they've done and remedy it. That would be the ideal scene, so that we don't have to have our employees fall down under and fix what they've done. Or elaborate, uh, yep. So, and that company, just so we, everybody knows who the vendor is, is Equipment Pro, we'll say it.
I mean, so I'm not happy with it because the owner's not happy with it. It's a veteran's home, I mean, it's, it's a VA and it's a, it's an elderly person's home, it's a, what would you classify it?
It's a residential care facility.
Residential care facility for people in need. And he paid for it, the owner paid for it.
Yeah.
And, but the problem is, that thing was, when it goes down, Ward One goes down. That is what happened last year except the Doc's house. So, me and Frankie, Ralph Riesner, every night trying to relieve pressure, keep it out of, Brandon doesn't have, everybody's out. And it looked like Christmas with the grinder box, everything was flashing. So, you know, I don't have any residents on that side, what fifty? Probably fifty houses trying to protect, plus, Mary Cliff has never flooded this bad. I mean, they, they almost had to evacuate, uh.
So we've sent, uh, emails to Equipment Pro and sent a registered letter. And, uh, we're, I mean, we're going to take this city down.
Down.
Uh, and, uh, and also we need to remedy it quickly without screwing them and dragging things out for a month or two months. Because some of the users to, uh, address what's in there.
Now, my question is, if it totally fails, if it totally fails, do you want me to get it repaired however the cheapest bid I can get, with a quality engineer?
Oh, well, we have to do it, and then, we have to do it, and then also I would, uh, contact our city attorney, you know, to take legal action against the company. And we documented what's been done, how it's been installed, how it wasn't.
There are pictures.
Installed as well as it should have been, and it should be open and shut case. It's just, uh, how long they come to us around this.
You said we didn't have pictures?
We had plenty of pictures, and then they, they tried to, particularly we did it, but we did not do it. A previous employee was up there washing them, but, um, never recorded, they said they were done. And we haven't had issues, so that broke, and then that's when we found. And that may be kind of on our side, but we need to remedy bigger rights. The owner made it right with us, we need to make it right with them.
Yeah.
And we have to defend them too, and he's obligated, he can defend himself, like, you know, hopefully not against us, but we're doing our due diligence with email chain, paperwork, paper trail, everything. But that's why I, I have, we looked at it, what, twice a day to check on that and reset that on the pump, just to make sure it was down.
Yeah, the company's received a lot of business from us over the years, so, uh, you know, it's in their interest to maintain a good relationship with us.
And they pay pretty good penny on their water, two or three, I mean, it's thousands, so, I mean. But if it happens again, they got to evacuate, we're on the hook for this, and I don't want that.
So are we talking about going ahead and starting some project, you're talking about, or?
That's, well, I mean, like me and Adam and Eric were talking, we could actually, I mean, Nate, that harder rush for fifth pit, I mean, it's not, I mean, I've done it too.
Yeah.
The residential was just a bigger pit, it's just a point about stopping flow of water for at least a couple hours. But, I mean, they use water all day, well, it's where we have the issue that stopping water, I mean, you know, uh.
We just have to pick the perfect time.
Well, the thing is, it could kill us from the rating, we're going and everything. And the problem is, we don't know if our pigs, they're gone, they block the water or any good, and maybe dry rot it as they go. If you're looking at it, one of us grounded, because it filled up fifteen hundred gallons within, how long did it take?
Seven minutes. Four minutes.
And if we're down there on harness, we're done.
Yeah.
And it's definitely hot from them industrial washers, I mean, they get, what, they're steaming? What are those things?
Those aren't steam, but they're, they're very large industrial washers too. And they run all day, every day.
And I don't know about you, but I'm really much getting thrown off and dying to slow down, death, or set this and whatever else might come out. But, or drown, it's just, I'm living liability here.
Yeah. I'm going to some hepatitis, that's what you're looking at.
That's the least of my worries, that's, that's terrible, but, but drowning, but, you know, it's just. I was asking if it does not seal, because seals don't build eventually where the set seal is on that foot, right?
Well, the other question is, is I wonder, because the bad part about it is trying to pull that up with a tractor, like we do the other pumps in town here, the way it's sitting on that hillside, that is very sketchy. Um, and that's a header pump too, that's.
That one?
That's a, that's a previous life pump.
So they're eight pounds?
It was installed with a crane.
Yeah, it was installed with a crane truck. Um, the thing about it is, is, I mean, we could pull the pump and actually bring it up to the top and check the seals on it. Uh, to see if the seal got ripped or something like that, but it's the point, uh, quality work should have been, quality work, it shouldn't have been half, you know, I don't know.
And they kept.
Not, not being, not being rude, whenever you've got the conduit sitting on top of the ground, so that they're ready. Uh, and then larger than going out the bottom of the non-buck control panel, which it never should have, never was like that before. Um, yeah, so.
And the arm fell off.
Yeah, that, I'm pretty, pretty upset about it, so, I mean, it's not even working. And I, I understand it's probably under guys down here, they're already going on the drive, but, you know, come on, huh? So.
So is this, is this something that we're going to wait a lot, do you mean? Or is something that they need to throw out?
I, this is the thing, it's expensive, this and parts will look at twenty-three thousand dollars just to rush what they cut and damaged. I've come for this as Band of Vendor Engineering. But TJ Rankin's looking into that too. I have five different engineer, higher class that would do these, but even E1, we're trying to figure out if they can make one for them. Like a prototype, just to, you know, where we can kind of get this going because of that.
Because, because the system, the system where it is, it might, it might have fit, the two rail system. And with what's in there, it got retrofitted, uh, to work for momentary, I'd say. I, I don't know how you want to say it, but, but it was not fit to its purpose to that rig. And it was a makeshift, and things rust, things break, and that's what happened. Uh, the worst areas, worst things so far in there that I can see, but, uh. Uh, I don't know what's serious, what's staying so far in there that I can see, but, uh, it wasn't the piece that needs to be. Um, but the thing about it is, is the only other option is, is retrofitting it or buying a total different pump, a Myers pump that actually runs on that, and anyway, no mud or paint or whatever that actually runs on. Uh, but that's the problem we're having right now is like Ben with E1 and stuff. We're having a problem trying to retrofit to that size. Uh, and then, you know, Band-Aiders talking to us about it, but their, uh, pumps, um, yes, they do sell Myers, but they're trying to keep the cost down, if we make it that way. Um, plus the Myers are basically going opposite, they're a different thing now, but, um, but it's just a point. The railing system and stuff, I know before, uh, one area worked it before, but Gavin and I, I can't work on it. It's called a part of, uh, and that's what we're trying to do. Hopefully we can manage to, usually we got it in there without actually pulling everything, but it's kinda coming down to pulling everything out of the pit and restarting over. Uh, if we can get a stand alone pump and actually stand by itself and actually just plumbing it in for the plumbing, it would work, but it's hard to get a stand alone pumps anyways, uh.
I do got that one at W fifty Myers from Band-Aiders, he's getting it right now.
Yeah.
Where we can gut it, get rid of damaged parts and pump it in. And that was supposed to be, I can sit on it, it's going rail, two rails or just stand alone.
So are we passing that expense on to?
We would have to go through, yes, we would have to file an equitory, just to, yes.
So you don't really have to, either way it needs fixed.
I just don't, I'm at.
Technically anytime this pump can go sideways and it, and we're talking sideways, it, it, it touches a back grid, then it's going sideways.
Yeah.
And anyways, I don't know if it's not actually sitting like, it's not, it's not secure like it's supposed to be.
This is right.
Uh, and if that does go sideways, that's whenever that line, that is a little harder.
That's.
It's, 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 it's. It stops.
No, but what you're saying basically is we don't have a choice.
Yeah.
If they're standing still and not doing anything, we gotta do something and then send it to a lawyer to get.
You wanna see the engineers?
So, yeah.
What they looked and they found that it's missing, it should be there, and what it takes to fix it. That's from, from the gentleman from TJ Rankin from Kansas City, they came down to draw for us. That talked to him and he sent, um, Matt down. Matt came and looked at it and that's what he came up with. Based off the original design, but the way they did that is not gonna hold that blow.
Right.
Cause their senses went up there, you know, residential senses went up there. They had apartments and they had this and commercial washers back then, but it's sold in the eighties, you know?
Yeah, so it's put us in position where we have a potential twenty-four thousand dollar repair.
Oh, yeah. And it's like, we rolled that, you know?
Right. Okay.
So I just wanted you guys to look at, cause the pump, now that pump is there. So that pump, the same one we got down at the plant, and it handled that. We dumped that fifteen hundred gallon thing and it, it kept up with it the whole time. It didn't even lag. So, I mean, and that's the replacement for that is for commercials where you don't have to buy two. You can only, you just need one.
Will you take that one and put it there and this one and put it there?
No.
What would you, should I, oh, we got sitting down everybody, the other one, it's on the creek?
Yeah.
Anyway, the one that's at US, we can convert.
If we put five, five horsepower?
That, that railing system that's on that other pump down there, there's another one that's like that. We can actually put that on if that's the same ones.
It's the same, that one's the ones you can do without, they can pre-stand, you know, two rails or one or two. But, I mean, it's just so, if you go up there, it's a botched job.
Hypothetically, they come down and fix their.
We will be there, we will be there to oversee that.
Okay, okay.
And that, and if it's not adequate or up there is OD and armpit right now, that's not a deep ability to open now.
Okay.
Put that much electricity on the ground and a conduit is loose.
This, this says that, uh, that's just for the parts company.
Yeah, they don't.
That's not even included.
That'd be the crane and all that, but they're trying to work a deal, we, we do business with them a lot. And me and Doc, I have to live with them, you know, and, but I'm going through everybody, that's, you know? But you, I just don't know if we should wait or what, what to do, I just.
I don't know, I don't know that I would wait that long, you know, you can't trust the weather, I mean.
So you got it worked back and then you get, have the company sending the letter and, and, you know?
I'm saying, I was told that, that, uh, it was a former owner been here, but anyways, um, I sent the email chain and the last email, oh, I forgot to ask him, but he said he had to go to the hospital, which that made me true. But somebody else in that company has to be able to make decisions, I'm sure.
Yeah.
Because Bill, what Bill told me the warranty was, and they're trying to tell me sixty days, the paper says different.
Right.
So.
So I give them, what, forty-eight hour, like forty-three to seventy-two hours to respond?
I think seventy-two hours, I think that's adequate, like I did before.
And let them know that that's our deadline.
You know, I just, I'm not playing this game with.
Tell them.
That they're, you know, just dealing with lives here and human pieces of, you know?
Yeah.
So that's all I got, if you guys have any questions on that. I mean, I just wanted to know if it fails, fails, shuts down, burns up, and I gotta make a decision. Or we can honeywagon all that once, but we won't keep up with that blow.
Right.
So.
Yes.
Um, other issues, Frankie, the E1, you want?
Um, so anyways, well, I can wait until I'm sure.
Oh, we could, we could do that on there.
Yeah. I agree.
Okay, we'll do that on there, that's fine. Moving on, departmental report, uh, versus management, I've been working with FEMA again, like I said. Um, I've been doing some more bathrooms, uh, blood mitigation and also, uh, which I have plenty of ISO, FEMA ISOs. And then, just catching up on some things, so there's some new things out there. For like, um, hazardous materials, wastewater, you know, how to kinda alleviate if you have an accident in the stream and just, and then just mass casualty, you know, stuff like that. But other management, from working with them and CMRBC and just talking about things, so that's about it. That's all I got, other than that, um, Joe, do you got anything?
No.
Doesn't really, I mean, we're, we got some rain moving in, but it doesn't look like it's gonna be too tremendously strong, so I wouldn't worry about it. The ground weeded up, so that's all I got. So next department would be the police department. Uh, Doc, you got anything on the police department?
Yeah, based on, one of the, uh, things we had to decide with the new budget being passed is to, uh, suspend or table the police department for the time being, uh, because of budgetary reasons, uh, and, uh, and secondary circumstances as well. So, uh, in the interim, we're gonna access comedy, uh, for coverage and, uh, that's all I got.
Um, yeah. Uh, on that speaking of that, I don't know if you're okay with the order, I'll reach out with like that kind of stuff, I was saying, uh, like when they offer to pay us to use.
Yeah.
If you're okay with that.
And, uh, and then also, uh, there were some issues with someone discharging firearms over on the island uh, while drinking and operating a vehicle. So, uh, I, uh, feel that it's imperative to contact the conservation department uh, because shooting from a vehicle is illegal. And then bring all the comedy, that's the comedy that has access to the trash gas field, at least give her that as well. Um, anything else?
Uh, no, I did send the paper to Jessica to make our ORI or the police department dormant. She filled that out, sent it to high control, so we don't have to do audits or anything like that.
Good.
Or anything the previous officer did or whatever, we don't have to deal with that. There's a repository, it'll be up there. Um, that way, there's no, uh, access to those records from the previous, you know, police that were on the ORIs, so.
The thing with discharging firearms, if you look through, from the CDC, it used to be the CDC, they published a thing called the weekly mortality mortality report, which would include torque per events in populated areas, but we have, this is a populated area. And someone discharges a firearm into the air, you know, the bullets, it just doesn't go to the moon or anything and ends up coming down. And the likelihood of it going through the top of someone's skull is probably rare, but it still happens. And that's why you don't do stuff like that. Hunting's hunting, the screw on, the screw on.
Yeah.
Uh, and then on the streets, we have the issue of a partial collapse of Culver's symbol.
Cedar tree.
Uh, and that's gonna be addressed immediately with.
Safety calls and stuff around it, so it's clearly marked.
And we have, it's calling out to, uh, Jokers.
And the engineer, they're actually.
Ricker.
Yeah, well, they, yeah, they're gonna do it.
Yeah.
So the engineer for Jokers, I, I sent out to everybody, but Jokers don't wanna respond. Look, I don't know what else you want me to do. They just have million dollars, they don't wanna, whatever. And I don't really wanna use that one company that's down south, that's fly by night. So, um, so they're sending their actual engineer up tomorrow, look at this, and kinda get idea what valves are, what equipment's needed, you know what I'm saying, cause running it back there and everything, so.
We've used Jokers before, you know?
I'm sorry?
We, we used Jokers before, have.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
Okay. I'm glad, that's why I said names out there.
Cause they grew up here, up there where Brenda Thompson lives. That was his grandmother's house, they thought it was up here, so.
We did a good job.
Yep, um, other than that, I mean, uh, today I was going around, you know, different streets, trying to cut them back if best is possible. And, uh, just keep going. I know there's some residents that send me, even call me about, um, Mary Cliff Hill, which I'm gonna leave it up to you guys' discretion. I did mow half of it, cause you could hardly get through the park. But also that same residence, I, I know they have a white fence, but they're not maintaining it over the, you know, mowing it. So I did mow it with the bush mower, I mowed it, you know, nicely. And I cleaned all that up down there, but I'm gonna leave it up to you. If you want me to go by ordinance to send the bill, to the time, they'll clean up that road where you had that gravel and everything up there. Because they haven't even touched it, it was live, it's tall.
Yeah. That's, I mean, the fence is beautiful, but it's, you know, it's hard to maintain it.
So, well, no, it's not the neighbors, it's the actual hill on Fifth Street. You go down the right-hand side.
Up.
Going up, they don't weed it, and Jessica knows what I'm talking about, and.
Oh, Mary Cliff doesn't weed it. That's a hard, uh, hill to, it's steep, so.
I mowed the bottom half and the top half and left them two wood strips, so I mean, uh, a weeder could take that down, I mean. So, but, I mean, if you wanna still do that, it's fine, I really don't know what to do.
But is this the first time the fifties happened? Cause I know the way our.
Oh.
No, absolutely not.
This is multiple.
Cause I remember whenever your brother-in-law.
Round one, mowed it for like forty-five years.
Right, but then when he did, didn't he do?
Oh, yeah. What was, are we trying to help Rock?
Yeah.
Oh, so that, um, that was probably six years ago that his brother-in-law stopped mowing up there. Um, they haven't, there has not been any contracted mowing since that.
Well, you know, it's yours, I mean.
And I hate to say it because I, I, I think so, but the hill looks bad, it looks bad. It's the first thing that you see, and I've complained about it personally to ownership. And it's expensive, it's expensive.
Yeah.
And we understand not having a boatload of money to spend on mowing, but it, it needs some verification.
You know, so I hear the ordinance, it says it has to be maintained.
Maintain the.
We get a lot of letters about. Um. You know what it's supposed to do, but I issue one warning and then if it's not responding to, then they, then they got to pay.
I'll issue the, the warning, but the next time, and I told the neighbor next door, I said, you still have to mow, even though you put a fence in, you still have to mow up to the road and maintain it. It's not the city's job, just because of the template, and it's not our job to mow and maintain that. So I, I'm gonna take care of it, alleviate that. I went down a little bit, you know, Fifth Street, I did several streets that lived by years, I went, I went a little bit everywhere. They just did by Tom, Big Tom, and got that knocked down and spaces that, you know, need to be filled down and kinda cut back, so I did Cemetery Road, cause I got a call that, um, kids were jumping out of weeds and running cars out of Johnson Grass down there, around that curb, you know, that big, that bit. So, um, I sent an email, but it went probably in one ear and out the other, so I just decided to.
What curb? The one.
Past, uh, Dave's. You can't see either way coming, well, you used to be able to.
Oh, what kids?
Uh, there's kids that live back.
Yeah, there were, I don't know, it depends back there, it sounds like. So anyways, so I went and mowed both sides and cleaned all that up. And that way people won't walk like Doc walks and anybody else, you know? They can get over and not get hit, and they same name cars. But, I mean, the family came and done it and then they, we got a binder of water by a family.
Yeah, they mowed, mowed the pole.
They mowed his, uh, what, pole or, but anyways, so it's cleaned up for now, but it's not a responsibility, but for a safety thing, because there was super acts last year for this. And kids jumping out, I said, I know it's a kid's fault, but now this alleviates that whole issue, so.
So is that county's responsibility in doing it?
Half the road is, it depends who you talk to. If you look at the map, actually, we have the right side up to certain point. And right there where the pit is, the left side is county, whatever you want.
No, no, I've forgotten years, working here, or fresh start, we actually mowed both sides of the road all the way to where, uh, Dave Hobble lives there in the corner, and then with winter time.
Then the county would take the guts.
Yeah, county would take the rest, we took a moment. Then whenever it became winter time, we plowed the road all the way to the cemetery and turned around and come back because since we own the cemetery, finish for emergency personnel, some would have to appear or whatever, so, but, yeah, I mean, it depends who you talk to, you want all the team.
It does, if some bad happens, you know, there's just some bad weather. So I just wanted to take care of it, and because of safety reasons, just like Big Jeff, we can't get him out unless we put him in backup pickup truck to get him to an ambulance, because the road is fixed now, but like I trimmed that all back by the graveyard so you can see through the fence and try to keep going. But it's aesthetics and also safety, so they.
And then that way you don't have to go out in that neither, just to.
Yeah, and I mean.
You don't have to give me time to do it.
It didn't take me that long. I went up, turned around, I turned around, came back down, and done, um, even had Mr. Barnett's, that hill there, cut that back, cause the bus couldn't see.
Right.
So I'm doing what I can, not the Highlands, I can't get all that, but we'll get that soon, so, but it's just. But it's just one of the deals, but that's all I got on the streets.
All right. Water, wastewater?
Oh, yes, it's me. Okay. Um, Frank, take it away.
So anyway, uh, the water, uh, we had to replace the water, uh, K T pump again, um, you guys knew about that, uh, uh, we had to go with the walkman pump in, uh, the Elamont, we bought it back in February, I think, or something like that, and it's been a couple of weeks. Um, we sent it off for a warranty, I don't know if, uh, I haven't got a hold of the hydrants, since they called back.
Yeah, I did.
About it, um, so if it was warranted or not, we're gonna probably place it on a new pump, that warranty it, they can do it that way. Um, but everything's gonna be okay with the system up there, uh, I didn't have to dial it up, cause the walkman pump is a little different than the Elamont pump. Um, and we don't have a constant flow of water, uh, continuously, um, uh, one like the flow rate. Uh, so I can't hit the formula for the flow rate, cause we don't have a meter to actually show flow rate. Um, so I had to sit there and adjust it to get the current where we wanted it, um, which were good, we've been staying really good with it. Uh, the other thing is, we had to get a new barrel, um, because our barrel that we had in there for years, it's on the crack, it's got some slime in it, uh, but it's, it's basically crystallizing with that fluid in it, um, so we don't want that to suck up in the pump, screw it up very much, so I figured we'll get a new pump, or a new barrel. Um, samples been coming back, been on the water. Uh, the other thing is to, is, uh, we flushed hydrants, uh, last month, uh, we went through a hundred and seven thousand gallons of water, flushing them at the dead ends and cooling better water, calling out tubes, um, from the tower, since a lot of people on the, the dead ends and stuff, don't get water used. You know, with it being hot, so it kind of, uh, you guys probably smelled it too, uh, a lot of towns were smelling the fluid in the water. Just because it was showing that something was eating it up and the current got a little low, so it wasn't down below standards, but it got lower and then the water, the water would keep it at. Um, so I figured we're always doing the flushing to cool better quality water in, um, uh, to the system. Um, the other thing is to, is, uh, the lift station pump down at the syrup plant, it got installed, we had a little bit of hiccups with it, but it got installed too. Um, the syrup plant, uh, it's amazing, I mean, I, I did, uh, I don't know what happened, don't know what turned around on it, don't know if it was getting bad stuff coming in or what, uh, but, uh, our, uh, set abilities, our D O, our, uh, settlement, uh, we sludge judge, it's only been around two foot, foot and a half foot, uh, I don't know, uh, I guess the bugs are working overtime, I guess, so. Uh, so we've been doing really good, samples from the lab's been coming back awesome too, so I'm not, I'm not, I'm, uh, having a headache on that, so. Uh, before we would be at nine, nine to eight hundred, uh, on the set ability and we're not even close to that now, so it's been pretty awesome on that, so. Uh, I, I don't know if there was something coming into the system or even bad it, therefore with us pumping the center down and cleaning it out, you know, uh, cooling the, uh, foreign material out of there, help the rake out, so I do a job better. I don't really know what actually happened there, so, um, but it's been great, uh, for what it's worth, I mean, for what the plant can push out, um. The other thing is, is we put, uh, three, three new grinders.
Three new.
Grinders in.
Three new grinders.
Yeah, uh, we put three new grinders in, uh, this past month, um, uh, which, uh, and then we had, uh, a few months back, we had a, uh, E one pump that we had to send off because the stator went out in it. And I pulled it out of Miss Brewster's and we got rebuilt, it was under warranty, it was covered. Um, uh, anyways, uh, we installed it again, um, that pump turned around and went through again, um, we come to find out that that pump's got, had a, uh, flushable wipe in it, which I don't know where, uh, you know, uh, how they're set up on the bottom end, uh, do you know the chew up, uh, flushable wipes, they won't, they're just sucking right in. Uh, it's not like wallpaper, you know, just, uh, biodegradable material. Um, so we sent it off again and it's four hundred dollars, uh, to cover the stator in it, um, and, uh, cause it had flushable wipe in it. Um, the other thing is, we installed a new pump, a brand new pump. Because we didn't have that, uh, we don't have a backup rebuild pump or anything, we just had a new pump. We installed it in the same pit and we're to square one again, so. I don't know if, uh, foreign material getting flushed in the system, uh, uh, what I'm saying is foreign material is, uh, personal hygiene, or, and flushable water, I mean, flushable wipes, they say they're flushable, they're not flushable, they can flush down a tube, but they ain't gonna heat up. And that's a lot of stress on these new pumps and, uh, that pump's only been in there for two weeks.
Yeah.
Possibly, it's been about two weeks now, um, since it's been in there. Um, so we're, I think we got the same problem with that pump too, that's going on, and I think a rag got sucked up in it, and if it's in a stator, it will not be covered under warranty.
And.
So, I mean, I could see a resident saying, well, it says flushable, and then doing it, but we, we need to know, post it over, is that?
So the factory remains here on each one of them that we have installed. I, Eric, or Adam, talked to the resident and tell them, hey, this is what you flush in the system, do not be flushing, you know, uh, personal hygiene's, uh, things down there, like Q temps or anything like that, I'm, uh, uh. Uh, rubber baths, whatever you wanna call them, uh, anything like that, anything that ain't flushable, actually, the grinders can't heat up, and I'm, uh, you know, flushing. And I gave them that, we told them, you know, this is what you flush, toilet paper, feces and pee down, and nothing else, you know, uh, around your laundry soap or whatever. Um, the thing about it is, is this is the second time, we've, we've, so every pit that we install a new pump, we stuff them out, uh, we stuff them pretty well clean, of what our honeywagon can actually do, uh, and get it actually down to the floor, if there's any settlement, cause the settlement will, over time, get in the stator and we'll clog it up too, um, but that's gonna be wearing hair, that's what a pump's meant to do, it's gonna, uh, cool settlement, especially, you know, from, you know, laundry or whatever. Um, the thing about it is, is whenever this was installed, it was pumped out, this was said to the residents, this is the second time we actually informed them what happened with what was going on, we seen material in there and shit in there, we coated again. And then now we're on this brand new pump, that's only been in there for two weeks and it went up when we did, so, uh, I know it's not the E one itself. We've actually watched what the E ones do, what they can heat up, but, um, the factory main, the stator, the water, the pump works, so.
Yeah, they did it twice and were warned after the first, and they're responsible.
Yeah, we got to send the bill.
That's it.
That's it.
Adam, the, Adam, the engineer, mechanical, their tag called me, and he took apart and found parts around it, so a towel or one of the marker wet wipes in there, which inadvertently burnt up the stator, and that was the one that is rebuilt, and that stator was just a faulty stator, no big deal, but this was all, but that, and he said, it's not covered in warranty. What do you want me to do? And I said, well, we need it, you know, I mean, these are like four hundred seventy-five day hours, I said, well, head and do it, I mean, we have to have it. So meanwhile, we put a new one in there, now that's what. I mean, if this one burnt up, I think, uh, I mean, it is what it is, I mean, if, if you, if this one burnt up, I think they own it. It's their baby now, because I can call Adam and E one and have them come over and just direct and fill them, so.
I think that's a wonderful plan.
You know, I mean, we still need to charge for this, cause I have, we have to pay to get that pump back, you know, and.
I don't even talk to them.
Is that the same kind of pump that they put on an eight oh four?
Mm-hmm. Yep.
Hey, I had one for, when I first brought it, excuse me, sorry.
You do have a company.
Uh, I had this same pump to heat that, the first one they brought in here. I mean, had no, I had no problems with it, so, and Miami like flushing panties, so whatever they're doing.
You had the prototype pump, the first one down.
Yes, yes.
And it ate everything.
Yep, it sure did.
And it's still working, does it, did we put it somewhere else?
No, it's actually still over at the mall, because we didn't have another fridge.
Oh, that's right.
Anyway, so, we need, cause, well, she was talking about going back, and that's the reason why we didn't touch it then.
Oh, that's right, yeah.
Well, she's still gonna go back over there.
Well, yeah, I'm just saying, it's the reason why we didn't touch it.
I had it for, for the one brought in, because I had, the old pumps kept messing up at my place and silly ever, but I ain't had no problem with that.
Actually, any, any one, you good with any one that they're pushing that out now, do?
No, well, I opened it.
No, so we're at, I'm not, no, it's not.
That's not bad, that's a whole, that's a name one, like.
But I still didn't have no problems with that, though.
That one's still going, so.
So, it's on, speaks about flushing.
I think we talked about, a couple meetings that we had talked about sitting out, um, like others, people that this, these things cannot be questioned.
We've had town public hearings, we've had town meetings, we've had, I mean, do we need to staple it to like their door, I mean, I mean, it's pretty common sense.
We have to stick it out on the town address again.
The, it's over, they have an orders for it, let's just move forward, process the thing.
I mean, we talked last year.
I'll do this on the list too.
All right, so that'll take care of that, all right. Park, cemetery, um, Rose, you got anything on your end on that?
No, I'm not sure, thank you for your. I mean, moving, mowing it, as few minutes clean as possible, cleaning up whatever's debris we find, we're working on cleaning up snack shack, right, mowing up the park, get that all removed, so they can, we can, once you guys figure out if you're gonna rebuild or what you're gonna do with it, so. Um, that's all I got to say for that, for the park. Cemetery, I mean, we cleaned off all the fence lines and all that kind of stuff, so it's more open when you walk through there than we should. And Sharon's been up there, she's weeding, she's been staying very diligent on keeping the weeds and everything from the headstones and stuff like that, so when we do go up there and mow, we don't have to worry so much about not getting close enough or having them be overgrown. But it's, I just think, we can keep it up with it the best we can. The old caretaker's house, somebody has knocked that door open again and had been in there, so I'm in the process of trying to figure out the best way to cut it off to where it can't be open, whether it be go in there and nail the door shut or a piece, but if you apply a little bit of epoxy, nobody can get in there.
I have, uh, four by four, a lot of four by four sheets of vinyl from cement forms, uh, that are exterior grates, so you can, a couple of them to put in there.
Do you want us to re, do that, Doc?
Yeah, but for now.
I know.
Uh, see.
You have bricks though?
I have, yeah, I have six.
That would be reusable, Jimmy, if I'm saying.
That's why I said, yeah, I have bricks.
You have bricks, lots of bricks.
I have bricks.
Break it round.
All right then.
All right. That's it on that, uh, citizen participation, anybody wanna have anything citizen-wise? Connie, Miss Pritchard, Jevy, anything? Uh, Eric? I don't know, I'm calling them, I don't know what's going on. Um, there, I gotta see in here, so hopefully, I mean, if that works out, I'm hoping, I'm hoping. Uh, Frank, got anything else on your end?
Uh, the only thing I can say is, um, being, being a tag chief for this year, being down here in the mud, I, underneath it, it'll burn, uh, paint or not, so, um, see if I burn anything, it shouldn't be, but.
If we call it in, it's investigated, okay.
I mean, I understand people who got fire pits, uh, I don't really have an issue with a fire pit, um, if they're out there actually watching it and everything, just sitting around, you know, having it together with family or whatever, but, uh, talking like brush piles and just burning brush and not even anything to do it, cause it drives it, and it is very, very dry out right now, so.
And burning pits, you know, great, I mean, that's one star, can, but.
I understand that, we, you know, I mean, it's.
I think after the rain will build it.
Yeah, I think it'll have a little bit.
Yeah.
So. Uh, but that's basically it, I mean, on that part, I mean, hopefully that everything goes well and we get what we're hoping for, so. Uh, on all the infrastructure part, so, I think it'll be awesome, so.
All right. Okay, well, that's all we got, uh, with our motions, it's closed.
Pick the motion to, which are?
Sharon, go in and close. Oh, we're not doing a close? Okay. All right, motion, may, say, anybody?
Yeah, I think we did.
Yes.
All right, all favor?
Aye.
Any votes? All right.